Okay, good evening. It is Tuesday, October 11th, and we will call the regular council meeting of the City of Twinsburg to order. Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Ceraci?
Here.
Ms. McPhirren?
Here.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Okay, next we'll have the invocation and the pledge led by Ms. McPhirren. Please rise.
We ask for guidance and direction in all city matters before us tonight. We give thanks to be able to be together. Let us continue to strive to make our community a better place. Help us to work together, and may we give our best always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes from the September 13th and September 27th meetings. Is there any discussion changes or corrections? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Next, we have audience participation. Shannon.
First, we have Michael Turrell.
Good evening, Count. Michael Turrell, 9930, Forest Lake Drive. You guys probably know that by now. I'm here speaking tonight on the annual Tales of Locust Grove Cemetery Tour. I don't know if any of you guys have ever been on it. This is going on this Friday, October 15th, and Saturday, October 15th. Friday the 14th, Saturday the 15th. Basically, the Historical Society puts this thing on where they get a whole bunch of high school actors, they have some kids that are younger than this, they get adult actors in there, and they stand next to the actual headstone of the Twinsburg historical figure, and they read a one-page script and tell you about this person's influence on Twinsburg and their contribution to Twinsburg Society in their day. One of my favorite things is seeing Richard Bissell portraying Samuel Bissell, his great-great uncle, I believe, which is kind of cool. But it's really a great event, it's very family-friendly, there's nothing spooky or scary about it, but you get to learn a little bit about Twinsburg history and, you know, go and visit one of these little hidden gems in the center of Twinsburg that not many people get to really take time to go through Locust Grove. Everybody meets at the Historical Society in the Freeman Barn, and they have hot chocolate and Starbucks and little desserts and, you know, little treats and stuff. I didn't write anything down, I got it in my phone, so I'm just keep bringing this thing back to life. Adult tickets are five bucks, children's are a dollar. Tours start at 5:45 and go every 15 minutes. It takes maybe a half hour to go through the whole thing. Until about 7:45, oh, each tour takes around an hour, so I guess I was wrong. You can buy tickets at the barn and follow your guide, there's free refreshments. For more informations, more information, you can check the website, www.twinsburghistoricalsociety.org, or you can call and leave a message at the Historical Society, 330-487-5565. So I just wanted to let you guys know about that. I hope to see a lot of you there, it's really a good time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one point on that, I just want to thank Ed Ponter has kept me up to date. I guess him and Dennis Sladowski's been doing a lot of restoration at Locust Grove, so a lot of the headstones have been, over 40 headstones have been repaired, straightened, so they've actually done some classwork and are historically doing some work there. So, anyway, just reminding me about that.
Okay, thanks. Next, Shannon.
Hi, I wanted to bring you up to date on Kent State. We appointed two new advisory board members, former mayor Kathy Prokop, and everyone knows her resume, so I'm not going to go through that. And then the other gentleman's, the other person's name is James DeVorec, he lives on Rapids Road in Burton Township, he is a Burton trustee and a realtor. We have four vacancies, maybe five, we filled two. We're going to try to fill the other two and kind of leave one open in case someone special comes along that we really want to have on it. There continues to be changes, they've changed managements out here at the RAC Center. A gentleman that used to be a GIAB is now managing this one here. And Dr. Stoker is looking at numbers now, they're looking to break out what the GIAB does in numbers and what Twinsburg does in numbers, what the full-time FTE equivalent looks like to the part-time, how many students are involved in post-secondary options, and how they can be more efficient. I think I told you before that with her coming in and the new vice president, they're looking at efficiency. I will safely say Twinsburg is looking good, we're safe, but the partnership or the two schools being connected, there seems to be a little gray area going on, and we're just not sure what direction that's taking. So we'll know over time. The school consolidations has just fallen into a mess. Berkshire and Ledgemont are the only two that are still together. It's my understanding Newberry and West G are looking to merge. And then Cardinal was still trying to stand alone, as everyone's levy out there fails. That's one of the reasons why Kent was looking at trying to help them with that financial burden. The state will vote in November, I guess, on legislation to help fund the school if they're able to pull it off, and it'll go on Kent State's site, so I'm assuming nothing will be in place until maybe January as far as that moving forward. But as was explained to us, there is a timeframe on that, and with that timeframe, the districts have to make some decisions. Berkshire and Ledgemont has formed a partnership here recently with Auburn Career Center to try to reach out to their students for the post-secondary option state mandate, because that's what's driving all of this, is the post-secondary option mandate. So I just wanted to bring you all up to date on that. And I know ordinance 95 is on tonight, which impacts Coppelstone and the widening of 91. I spoke with our attorney, David, and he hasn't received a letter. We have responded and we're working on it, so I'm going to cross-check that for you tomorrow and have our attorney forward it. I'm assuming it went to the appraiser, what's that company?
A trade system.
So I'm assuming they must have our paperwork, because we are due diligently trying to work on our privacy and security back there, too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Thews.
Good evening, Bob Thews, 2229 Demme Drive in the Meadowwood Community. Probably I won't speak anymore on roundabouts, this will be my last time, so for those of you who are tired of hearing about it from me, won't hear it anymore. I said at the time that they had the emergency meeting and they illegally passed the grant at that time. I said I would remember those who were for it and who were against it, okay? And from that standpoint, it's pretty apparent that unless the sky falls in right now, there's a snowball's chance in hell that that roundabout is going to be stopped. I understand that, okay? All I'm saying at this point in time is that I will guarantee that I will follow up on that, what I delivered. So those people that have held fast to this roundabout realize that I will be, I'll do whatever in my means, power legally, to make sure that you do not serve in a public nature anymore. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Next, Shannon.
Evening, Chris Schaefer, 1988 Presidential Parkway. Actually, I wanted to talk a bit about the last item that you discussed during your caucus with the plaque at the baseball fields. And it sounds like you're moving in the direction I was hoping that you all would, and that is to have an application process for approval and all, because I don't think that a group should be able to just slap a plaque up anywhere in the city, especially, TBL is near and dear to my heart, I was on the board years ago. There's a lot of people who are the foundation of that group, and I was hoping that some of those people might be recognized if we're going to do something like that down the road. So if that application and approval process is going to be moving forward, I'm all for it and hope to be involved in that as time goes. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Next, we will move on to the council communication and committee reports. Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Scafidi. The Planning Commission met last night, October 10th, with one item on the agenda, which was the revised preliminary plat approval for Shepherd Preserve subdivision. That's about just under 20 acres, and it has 23 lots in it. They voted unanimously to recommend that council approve the plat, and it's my understanding that we will be receiving a resolution for our next council meeting to address it. Resolution or motion?
We haven't, we haven't received it yet from building, so...
Okay, Mr. Finch was putting it together, Lynn just sent me something today. The next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, the 24th, at 7:00 p.m., and on the agenda will be a revised preliminary site plan for the Marriott Hotel being proposed in the site of Damon's. So, also, the city has contracted with IGS to be the natural gas supplier for our aggregation agreement this year. There should be letters, I did not get mine yet, but I've gotten, residents have sent me letters, that the price will be $3.39. If you're in Twinsburg, you're opted in, and if you'd rather go with somebody else, you can opt out at no fee. There are no fees to get in or out of this program. There is a phone number of 877-353-0162 that you would contact to get opt, to opt out. If you're already in the program, you don't need to do anything. If you have any questions, you can contact me or somebody that in the service department who in the past has run this, but this is a 12-month fixed price, and that's what we have this year. And that's all I have this time.
Thank you. Mr. Ceraci.
I have not had any meetings, I have no report. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McPhirren.
I could just report that Parkson Rec is going to be meeting October 27th. The chamber board will be tomorrow morning. I know they had a successful plan date on Thursday, it was well-attended, and our Goth advisor will be on November 14th. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. What I have under, Capital Improvements Board met last Thursday, the 6th, and they went over all the capital requests from the department heads, and basically the capital requests were very low, and the department heads did a great job of providing explanations to the Capital Improvements Board, and therefore the Capital Improvements Board requested that no department heads be present, so they went over all the capital requests on their own, and they will be ready to, and they voted, as a matter of fact, they will be ready to present to the Finance Committee at the next finance meeting on 10/25 at 5:30, when that meeting is. They'll be meeting at 5:15, because they did have one question, and I believe that the finance director provided that answer today for them by email, so then they will meet a little bit early to vote on that, and then they'll provide their recommendations to council on October 25th at 5:30 at that Finance Committee meeting. So that went very smooth, and they did commend all the departments for doing such a great job with their finance, their capital request and their explanation of what they were requesting or not. As I mentioned just a minute ago, Finance Committee did meet tonight, and we went over the entire budget, we went through, we had several department heads here to come up and explain their budgetary requests for next year to the Finance Committee. We will have another meeting next Tuesday, the 18th, at 5:30 here, and that'll be for the remainder of the department heads to come up and present their, their budget to the Finance Committee as well. So, other than that, those are, that's what's going on between finance and capital improvement. That's all I have this evening. And we will move on to Mr. Steele.
ARB met on the Architectural Review Board, met on the 6th, they approved two signs, three houses and three additions to houses. They also will meet again on October 20th, and that's all. I'm done. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Stauffer.
Okay. Mr. Scafidi just reported on the Finance Committee, and my other committees have not met. So I'm done as well.
You're done as well, okay. Okay, we're on the Mayor, Mayor Yates.
That was quick. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things happening around town, I'm sure some of the departments made sure some of this, too, but I know from a service standpoint, people have been asking, there are some extended hours or days for branch pickup, leaves are going to start sometime in October, turn of the month, once we start seeing them pile up. We have a couple businesses that people are anxious to get open, the Dunkin' Donuts and Handels are both, I believe, pursuing their final occupancy here in the next week or so, so look for those businesses to open. From the Firehouse, we have their open house coming up this Wednesday night, I'm sure Chief's going to mention it, but that's always a big event, encourage everyone to come out, it's a fun time. The Trick or Treat, which is going to be October 30th, so we'll be able to announce this at the next council meeting, but that's always a fun event that we have up at the Fitness Center for Kids, where we bring all the service vehicles and fire trucks and everything, and have a nice fun event for those, for the kids up there.
Mayor, you want to mention our Trick or Treat night? I've had some questions.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got it down here. Yeah, so Trick or Treat will be on October 31st, so it is Halloween night, we always have it on Halloween night, no matter what the day, from 6 to 8. I know I've gotten a lot of calls regarding that also, but that's when it will be. We, I know we've changed it once, and unless some, something major happens, we won't change it again. Another event going on is the VFW has their 70th anniversary on October 23rd. That is a, an evening event, tickets are available still, the phone call to purchase those tickets is 330-425-7162, and then we also have a link on our website. So, I know they're going to stop selling in the next couple days, so you may want to go ahead and get those tickets if you want to attend that event. Seth is not here this evening, and so the Environmental Commission's asked me to kind of give a brief report. The last, last few years, we've had our Earth Day at, at the Fitness Center, and it's always been a good event, well-attended event. Last year, we moved it to some evening hours, which increased the traffic there. This year, we've decided to partner, and this is for next April, so it's a little early announcement, but with the Metro Parks, and we'll be holding Earth Day up at the Nature Center. So we're coordinating, I know Daisy and the environmental group is coordinating that whole event right now, so hopefully it'll be bigger and better than ever, and it's going to be, I guess, a great venue to have Earth Day. A lot of things will be going on, so they're planning that all out. The Simple Recycling Program, which is started last June, and in 2015 collected about 33,000 pounds of recycling material. This year, we're so far, we've collected over 18,000, but it's, it's one where bags are dropped off at people's homes and they can refill it, and it gets picked up, but it is a free service. And their next meeting is October 13th at 7:00 p.m. And then, another event I just wanted to, I guess, mention and encourage people to attend is, the school's going to have a heroine forum coming up next Monday at 7:00 p.m., so on the 18th. And, you know, this is an issue that's hitting us nationally. I watch daily numbers on overdoses that come to my computer every day from Summit County. They've gotten better, which, you know, any overdose is bad, but, you know, we were averaging 12 to 18 a day, and it seems like the last week or so, those numbers have decreased. I hope that trend continues. But this is an epidemic that's really hitting every municipality, every county, every, every state, and nationwide, so I encourage people to attend that. It's going to be an informative session, and hopefully just bring about the awareness that we need as a community.
What's happening there?
It's 7:00 p.m., and is that the high school? Yeah, so high school auditorium. Then, Mr. Scafidi did mention the budget, so we started some of the budget discussions. I've been working with department heads, and I just want to thank them for the work they've done. We've been talking for several months now and working up numbers on budget and capital, and what's being proposed right now shows a 1% decrease in our general fund and a 6% decrease overall. So it's a very aggressive budget, but it's one I think that is going to really help us in 2017. And I think that's all I have this evening, besides go tribe, and then we'll go into department head reports. Chris, you want to start, since you waited so long in the last session?
I did wait a long time, didn't I?
You did.
Well, since I last reported, the Service Department started going through the city one last time, they wanted to make a final sweep before cold weather on looking for potholes and any other asphalt repairs that are needed. They wanted to get a hot mix asphalt material down, which obviously lasts a lot longer than the cold mix. So they're going through all the roads now, and they'll, they'll spot those potholes and other areas that need repaired and do that in the next couple weeks. We are going to run our third round of street sweeping, they'll probably start that in the next week, and not sure if we'll get one more after that or not. Branch chipping, again, since I last reported, we completed September and October rounds. Year-to-date totals include 4,079 stops and 1,400 yards of debris chipped, and we are, again, going to run one more round in November, which we did that last year, we don't normally do that, but we're going to do it again this year, hopefully the weather will be good, and that'll be, that'll begin Monday, November the 7th. The sidewalk leveling program went real well, we finished up the year by doing 96 locations and 925 lineal feet. So that was a, that's a pretty good program, and I think we've got a lot of the bugs worked out of it, and we've got a good crew doing that, and that's, I tell you what, it's done very well, so we will start that back up in the spring. The hydrant painting, we ended up the year at 720 hydrants, which is roughly half of the whole city, and we will definitely finish that up next year. Again, that's another good program, the hydrants look a lot better, and it's much, much easier to prepare them and paint them, and I think with the paint we're using, it's going to be a long-term kind of repair, so that, that's pretty good. Again, I think I reported, we're going to look at the light poles, a lot of the, the light poles in town that we started painting a while back, because Ohio Edison without, you know, they didn't have the budget to do that. So we've gone through and provided an inventory for the guys, and in the spring, we'll probably start painting, try to finish up the city with those, those paintings, so. I also want to let you know, Warren Parkway, we've been up there with the tree lawns, trying to take care of those, we put weed killer on those, those lawns a few times, we've soiled and seeded those, and it's starting to come around, we look for coming out of, out of the winter, that, that area should look pretty good, so we'll keep an eye on it in the spring, and we should be able to get those lawns in a good condition. Again, as the mayor said, leaf program is coming up, we will actually begin on Monday, October 17th, and we just, we just run that program to the end of the year, so whenever people get their leaves out, we'll, we'll get them picked up, so. Household hazardous waste and paper shredding, we held, and we ran 197 vehicles through that, so pretty, pretty successful. We've had larger events, but we'll look at that again next year and see what we want to do. If you notice, the ADA ramp outside is, the ramp itself is complete, we're waiting for the handrails to be delivered, there's a few minor items with the doorways, the openers and those things, so obviously we'll get that completed this year, so that'll be, that'll be a good project, and we'll get that entrance opened back up. The floating walkway that, that we have on Center Valley Parkway, we completed the next phase of that, and that leads to, let's see, we, at, at the very end of that, we installed a walking trail that connects to Green Heron Way, if you're familiar with that area. So it was a neat little project, and it's, that's a nice area. Sewer maintenance continues to clean sewer lines, they completed just under 10,000 feet of sewer line cleaning in the last month, and we'll run that program until bad weather prevents that. And the last thing I have is the microturbine over in wastewater, year-to-date savings, we're over $32,000 in savings with the electrical generation and the avoidance of the natural gas usage. So that, that unit continues to work well and provides the savings we thought we would get. And that is my report.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, Chris, did you guys finish the, the bridge back behind Dodge there on the, back, over the water back there that somebody...
Yeah, isn't that the one you were just talking about? The, on Center Valley?
Oh, you mean the, the walkway, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all done, yep.
Who was it again that donated that night? Do you remember?
You know, I don't know the name offhand, because that went through Derek, so I'm not sure.
I think it was somebody named Watson.
It's really nice.
Yeah, so...
Chris, did you get any letters back from the private drives or private roads about their private hydrants?
We've gotten one letter back, yeah, so, and we will, we'll hit that in the spring.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening. During the month of September, the City of Twinsburg Communications Center generated 2,037 calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the Reminderville Police and Fire Departments. The total call count for the year is 19,298. Twinsburg police officers arrested and are cited 111 suspects into court on 144 different counts. Officers issued 128 written warnings and investigated 38 traffic crashes, of which 10 were injury crashes, seven were on private property, and none were fatal. I'm also happy to report that seven of the eight new police cruisers are in service, with the last one coming into service this week sometime, and so we'll be finished with that project, and I'm sure that Chris will be bringing cars that were going out of the fleet up for auction. I think we've got four or five Crown Victorias that will be going to auction, so that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. All right.
Good evening. The Fire Department, during the month of September, responded to 230 calls. That is, for the year brings us up to 1,900 calls, which is about 3% ahead of where we were at this point last year. A couple notable events, of course, on September 4th, we responded to the, the murder-suicide, and responded to, transported the victim, and then returned to the scene to support the police department operations. On the 19th, at about 11:30 in the evening, our squad responded and treated a 47-year-old female for just general illness. And while being transported to Hoosier Medical Center, she went into cardiac arrest. And at that point, with a two-man crew, one person driving, one person in the back, that one individual did one-person CPR and defibrillated the... one individual did one-person CPR and defibrillated the patient and was able to revive her prior to arrival at the hospital. And then on September 25th, Reserve Alloys Fire up on Highland Road, some of you may have seen the smoke. Two, or three trailers full of recycled electronics equipment caught on fire and burned for quite a while. We received mutual aid from Macedonia, Oakwood, Hudson and Hudson EMS. And we're on scene for about three and a half hours in the process of taking care of that incident. Fire prevention completed 125 fire inspections, I'm sorry, 105 fire inspections during the course of the month. We also completed four fire investigations. We had 10 public education events with contacting 120 different individuals. We also completed 773 hours of training during the course of the month. As far as points of interest are concerned, the weather warning sirens did all work properly the first Saturday of October. And as the mayor mentioned, we do want to invite everyone to come and join us for the open house tomorrow evening. We always enjoy the, all the visitors coming through the station and getting to meet you and greet you and telling you about what we do. So please, this is supposed to be a beautiful night and there is no baseball game to compete with, so come out and.
What time is it, Chief?
It's going to start at 5 o'clock, or I'm sorry, 5:30 to 8 o'clock, I believe.
Okay.
That's my report.
Thanks, Chief. Jim, you want to come up?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Golf staff has been working on our fall maintenance programs over the last few weeks. Some of these items include keeping the course clear of leaves, cleaning out the beds, cutting back perennials, removing dead ash trees, seeding and mowing. Also, fall aeration was completed on greens, tees, fairways last month and are healing and great with the nice weather. An update on the course improvements that are currently taking place. The third phase of improvements that started last month and is making good progress. I have met with our golf course architect prior to the contractor starting and went over the plans and all areas to be worked on. The renovations are focused on golf holes three through seven and include duly constructed bunkers, tees, drainage and replacing the original irrigation system. Also, also, there are going to be some minor renovations on holes eight and nine. At this time, holes six and seven are about completed and are growing in. The remaining golf holes are being roughed in along with new irrigation installed and should be seeded in the next few weeks. Lastly, the transfer pump, as part of this year's improvements, was delivered last week and will be in use next season as an, as an alternative water supply for the irrigation system. It's placed near the pond on hole 13 and the Service Department is going to do the electrical hookup on that unit in-house. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jim.
All right.
Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Just like to update you on our first advanced distribution that we received for our income tax. So far, we're up by 22%. We've received so far 1,387,862 compared to last year at this time, 1,137,347. For the year, we're still up by 11%, so that's a good thing. Also, just wanted to update you on something that I am very excited about and I think I have shared with you over at least seven years since I've been here, about cross-training finally, that is going to occur. We're trying to get a schedule that will be, that will complement all of this at the same time, sometime for this month, cross-training where the staff will, each of us will be able to know at least a percentage of each one's job. For example, cross-training with accounts payable and payroll. So I'm very excited about that finally, where we are still waiting on the final phase of the timekeeping. That project is almost closed. We're still doing a little bit of testing on that. But other than that, once that's up and running, look for the cross-training. You'll be talking to different people in the future. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Thank you, department heads. Next, we will move on to our legislation. We'll start with Ordinance 932016.
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6, 2016, the appropriation ordinance of the City of Twinsburg for the year 2016.
Okay, this has been read twice and it's up for adoption tonight, so I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 932016. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Ceraci, seconds. What this is, is again, under the appropriations for the bank and investment fees for, it was underappropriated this year for the bank and investment fees for the rest of 2016 to the tune of $2,300. So that's what Karen's asking for. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 932016 passes 6-0. Next, we have Ordinance 952016.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the appropriations of certain interests in real property necessary for the improvements to Darrow Road located between Glenwood Drive and the Solon border.
Okay, and that's its second reading tonight. Next, we have Resolution 972016.
A resolution acknowledging Council's receipt and review of the monthly financial statements submitted by the Finance Department for July, August and September 2016.
Can I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 972016? Is there a second?
A second. Yield?
Mr. Ceraci, seconds. What this is, is the, and we do this typically, we do a monthly, but it's Council acknowledging the receipt of the monthly financial statement. And this one will uncover, will cover July, August and September. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 972016 passes 6-0. We have Resolution 982016.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the legal defender's office of Summit County, Ohio to provide for representation of indigenous defendants.
Would, I need a motion from somebody to adopt Resolution 982016.
I'll make the motion.
And Mrs. Stauffer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Steele. And what this is, is providing free legal representation to indigenous persons at no cost, of course, through the legal defender's office of Summit County. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 982016 passes 6-0. We have Ordinance 992016.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6, 2016, the appropriation ordinance of the City of Twinsburg for the year 2016.
Okay, and that's on its first reading tonight. We have Ordinance 1002016.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6, 2016, the appropriation ordinance of the City of Twinsburg for the year 2016.
And that's also on its first reading tonight. Next is Resolution 1012016.
A resolution authorizing a limited exception to Section 509.11 of the codified ordinances of the City of Twinsburg prohibiting construction noise during certain hours for the Dominion, East Ohio, CLE 18, Darrow Road, Phase 2, Betterment Project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, would somebody like to move for adoption? Isn't this a resolution?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Okay. Make a motion, we adopt Resolution 1012016. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Really?
You said you wanted somebody to make a motion?
Okay.
Didn't you?
I did. What this is, is this is Dominion, East Ohio is installing a 12-inch gas main down Darrow Road from Edison Boulevard down to Maple or the Ravenna Road area. And they've asked for permission to work at night and they'll be working between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Any other discussion?
They're asking for it on emergency. So we need to amend the motion.
Didn't you say it's an emergency? It's a resolution.
So I'd like to make amendment to Resolution 1012016 that we added a standard emergency clause.
I believe it's on there, is it?
Yeah.
It's on there. He just read his motion just to.
I didn't say it in my motion.
You didn't say.
It's on. It's adopted as an emergency.
This is, I'm sorry, this is just a wait, a 10-day waiting period for the resolution. If you still want to start early. So we've got a, we've got a motion and a second.
And a second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 1012016 passes 6-0 as emergency. Ordinance 1022016.
An ordinance amending the NPDES Phase 2 Stormwater Management Plan of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio, as presently on file with the city engineer.
And that's on its first reading tonight. And finally, we have Ordinance 1032016.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general and special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 6, 2016, the appropriation ordinance for the City of Twinsburg for the year 2016.
Okay, that's also on its first reading tonight. We'll move on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Mr. Maestros, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Mayor?
Nothing this evening.
Mrs. Stauffer?
I have nothing.
Mr. Steele?
I think we mentioned it before, but Gary, it's the 16th for the Ohio chapter and the Wrestling Hall of Fame.
This Sunday, yes. Congratulations. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. All I have is the next Council meeting will be on October 25th. The caucus will start at 7:00. That's all I have.
I had one thing. At the last Council meeting, I lost my voice as the meeting started. And Mr. Ceraci had brought up that we had agreed to do a survey about the roundabout after the first roundabout was in. And that's not my understanding that we agreed. I thought we agreed that we were going to talk about something after the first roundabout. I did not vote or agree that to a survey.
I was very specific that that was my understanding of what we did.
I'm glad you're putting my understanding out there because I couldn't say anything.
I get it.
That's all.
That's it? Okay. Mr. Ceraci?
Nothing here, thanks.
Mr. Fury?
I'd like to congratulate our Community Hunger Center. They had a record-breaking September. Terry Pieto Pateo and her group served 1,424 individuals that encompassed 567 households with 380 seniors, 685 adults and 359 children for a grand total of 19,632 meals in the month of September. Our Community Hunger Center is located at 9733 Ravenna Road and their phone number is 330-963-3663, which really spells out food. It's 963food. If you can support them either financially or with donations or with plastic bags, because when you give 20,000 meals out, you need help getting those groceries into bags to deliver, so they're always short. But they do great work and I hope that you would support them. And I mentioned it earlier, but there is a, gas aggregation letters are coming out. It's an opt-out program. The city's price is $339 through IGS.